Going for lunch tomorrow?
Of course.
Yes.
I can only spare a while. Supposed to go to Lucas tomorrow.
I'm going, uh, actually we want to pre-open.
That's all.
These are all.
Yeah, I think they're coming.
I believe for Boston, it might have been one, so. Stayed on it's gonna be an hour.
Yeah.
I haven't found anything.
What's gonna be nice is that.
Yeah.
You're right. I'll be. Yeah, it's the wind.
Wonderful. Okay, everybody, welcome to the June 2nd Board of Trustees meeting. Um, let's please, um, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Dan Rogers from.
This is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we just remain standing for a moment of silence, uh, in honor of Nathan Ha, the, uh, 12th grader, sorry, the 7th grader, the 12-year-old who, uh, passed away this last week, uh, when he was hit by a pickup truck at the intersection of Middle Nick Road and, uh, or the board. All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing portion of the Board of Trustees meeting?
I will make the motion.
Seconded by?
Aye.
All in favor? I see it's a tie. Wonderful. Um, first on the agenda is one of my favorite topics, Mr. Dan Rogers from the North Hempstead Country Club for his fireworks application.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Dan.
I'm probably late, it's been a year already.
I know.
So our fireworks this year are actually due in July, July 2nd. Bush debate on the Wednesday, uh, what day to do it based on the holiday felt, uh, but we settled on that with our request for a rain date for the 3rd. Um, interested to see what kind of turnout we get from our members for that, judge next year based on that. I'll talk to you about that here.
Okay.
Uh, otherwise, everything else remains the same. We did switch to a different company, though, a salesman who worked for one company we used 10 years ago when I started working here, so I'm familiar. We gave them the old paperwork on how to do everything, bomb squad came in, got with me last week. Looks like the same picture as that, I know, I just said the same picture.
Right.
So, um, I think it's the same.
The, uh, tee will be open for public viewing, same as always is. And then I learned something new this year, that the bomb squad will not allow anyone to fly drones on the property.
I saw that, I saw that, uh, this morning.
Yeah, that's new, I just got that from Marla, so. Of course, it'll hit something. I've never seen a drone there before, but at least now we have that from Bomb Squad, so that's something, we'll make sure that that's enforced.
Well, it turns out that a lot of drones won't fly in the dark. Like, they just won't go up.
Right.
They have a setting, so, but my golf pro was trying to pass, so he won't be allowed to try to reach that.
Right. And the, all the mailings was, were done, Marla? And we received no feedback from any residents?
No.
Okay.
I got mine today, so you probably won't get any, and it actually went to Farrell Fleming, who has lived here 13 years, so, but it went to the resident of 26th Country Club. But it came in the mail today, so you won't get any feedback because they didn't get it until today.
Hopefully, yeah.
Okay.
How many people did you have last year, Dan?
Uh, we finished with 1,500. We usually get reservations for about 1,400, we get changes and everything, and it's 1,500. They're, they're.
Um, does anybody on the board have any questions about this application? Max?
I'll be there.
I was gonna say, Max would be there.
Anything you guys can do to help get the police to help direct traffic at the end of the event? Last year, we pulled some favors to get port of the police to help direct some traffic, but Nassau, um, sometimes can't stare, um, so if you guys could.
Okay, so this is what we're gonna do, send me an email at what time you want them there at.
Yeah, it's the end of the event.
You could give me, please, they're gonna wanna know those, you know, 8:45, 9:45, whatever, and I'll reach out to the sixth, um, meeting with them next week.
Right.
So I will ask kindly if they have the, uh, resources, yeah, 'cause otherwise it could be dangerous, it backs up.
Especially for those walking in.
And yes, I suspect there'll be less walking people, 'cause it's Wednesday.
It's possible, but, you know, it's a long weekend, so, um, you know, certainly, and I'm gonna go at 9:15, which is a little earlier than last year, um, why is it earlier, uh, and to, you know, I just had people sit around here.
Right. All right, so just send us a note, myself and Marla, and we'll, I'll, I'll ask the sixth to help us out.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions from board members?
Who fixes the greens?
Who fixes?
The greens, never mind, I withdraw my question.
Jeff, do you need to approach? Hold on, please, approach the bench. All right, um, I would like to, um, make a motion to accept the July 2nd, 2025 fireworks application by the North Hempstead Country Club. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If I'm a member, do I have to abstain?
I, I think you possibly should abstain. Yeah, I think you abstained last year, so this'll keep, they'll keep it consistent. Thank you, Dan.
See you next year.
World record in and out this time.
See you next year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda will be the car covers registered vehicles. As we've mentioned over the last few public meetings, this local law intent is to prohibit covered and concealed or obscured license plates. Um, we are doing this in order to help our code enforcer do their job, um, to make sure that unregistered vehicles are not parked for long periods of time in our, um, village on, in driveways, and it's just to keep unsightly vehicles away. And I think we've discussed this ad nauseam for a few months. Are there any?
This was actually just a minor change before, to make clear that's unregistered vehicles that we're concerned about.
Yes.
And that the license plate can't be seen from your presumption that it's unregistered.
Correct. And in the case where, on a case-by-case basis, if something needs to occur, we can work with the code officer and our, um, and the residents, 'cause one resident did express some concerns about this, and I'm sure we can work with them, with their car cover. Are there any questions from the board? And any question, I forgot to ask before, any questions from the public? That being no, I'm going to make a motion to, um, pass this local law to car covers registered vehicles, and I need to do the SECR, and Jeff, I left a piece of paper here, so hold on. And for the purposes of the New York, of this New York State SECR Act, I move that the village be identified as lead agency, and that this action be deemed a type 2 action under SECR, having no significant impact on the environment, and that as such, no further action is required under SECR, so I'm making two motions. Can I get a second for both of them?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? No. All right, thank you.
Have we found car covers?
I'm sorry?
No, I'm asking the mayor, have we found, has Jack and Jerry found a lot of cars covered?
There are lots of car covers in the village.
There's also a boat in the, uh, driveway on, uh, Farm View and Yulet.
On where?
Farm View and Yulet.
So these are the kinds of things, if you wanna reach out to Jerry or Jack, we can definitely be taken care of. I don't know. You can CC myself, I'm sure we can make that boat go away pretty quickly.
It may, maybe it's gone.
Unless it's covered with a giant cover, you can't see it.
This was, it was Saturday, so it could be gone by now.
Yeah, well, they're working on the weekends, so they can find out. Next is Local Law C of 2025, subdivisions and average density developments, and this one, we have discussed quite a few times as well. Jeff, we didn't make any changes from the last prior laws. This would be C, the subdivision and average density. Which is also known as lot averaging. Let's see if I have stuff I wanna read about this. In a quick nutshell, village code does not adequately address large lot development. The purpose of average density development is to preserve open space and environmental resources while allowing compact development. Average density subdivisions allow dwelling units to be grouped on those portions of a property most suitable for development while leaving substantial portions as undeveloped open space. You know, our goal here is to preserve environmentally sensitive areas in the natural state. It is therefore the purpose of this section to enable and encourage the flexibility of design and development of land in the village of Flower Hill in such a manner as to preserve such natural, environmental, and scenic qualities. Now, as I've stated before, we have no applications, there's nothing in front of any boards concerning this, but since our code doesn't address this, we wanted to get ahead of things if we ever do get some large development applications. Are there any questions from the board on this?
I have a question for Jeff.
Sure.
So is this only applicable for large lots, assembled lots, like, I guess, like, maybe the Country Club property, or? Or, I, I guess what I'm, I'm more pointedly, um, if there was a situation where the hospital has bought many homes, um, could assemble a series of lots, then they could interpret this as being, um, applicable, or is that just not off, or is that off the table in terms of that circumstance?
Uh, it's not, it's not, like, it's written before the board, and the board would have to completely, um, it's only become before the board.
Okay, so, right, okay, so the board still has the ability to?
Yeah.
Refer them back to the, the, over, of the zoning ads, for the district, okay.
But yes, since you did mention the word Country Club, yes, if the Country Club is to.
Obviously, those properties are the ones that are, um, would be the most applicable for this kind of.
Good word, yes.
But I just didn't want it to be potentially misused.
No, this is, this is only for, this is, this is purely protecting.
So when the code provides that any lot average subdivision application subject to review. Lot average subdivision application shall be subject to review and public hearing by the board in this court in accordance with the same procedures otherwise applicable to potential subdivision class now.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? That being said, I am going to make a motion to approve Local Law D's subdivisions and average density developments. The same, sorry, C, I'm jumping ahead, thank you, C. At the same time, I'm gonna make the SECR announcement, or, per, declaration. For the purposes of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SECR, I move that the village be identified as lead agency, and that this action be deemed a type 2 action under SECR, having no significant impact on the environment, and that as such, no further action is required under SECR. So I'm making two motions, seconded by?
Second. Sorry.
Mr. Lewandowski, he was first.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody abstaining? No. Thank you. Next. Proposed Local Law D, this one I'm gonna get right, site plan review, oh, yeah, site plan review special conditions. Oh. Okay, I'm going off this, and so, fee, land use applications. The intent of this local law is to require that land use applicants reimburse the village for expenses incurred by the village in connection with their application. Currently, Flower Hill taxpayers pay for these additional costs. This is what we discussed in the past, if an applicant comes in with a large-scale development and the village needs to hire traffic engineer, we need to hire some civil engineers or any other type of experts, that cost would get pushed onto the applicant, it wouldn't have to, uh, be on the taxpayers. Do I have any questions from the board? I think we've discussed this a few months already. Any questions from residents? That being said, no, I'm gonna make a motion to pass Local Law D, and the SECR, which I, do I have to read again, Jeff?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right. For the purposes of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SECR, I move that the village be identified as lead agency, and that this action be deemed a type 2 action under SECR, having no significant impact on the environment, and that as such, no further action is required under SECR. So I'm making a motion for both, seconded by?
I'll second it.
Deputy Mayor Janice, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstain? No, wonderful. Next, I'm gonna jump ahead, and I'm gonna do the Verizon franchise agreement. The Verizon cable TV franchise is up for renewal, Verizon's proposing a five-year contract instead of a 15-year renewal like they currently have. A special note is the additional 1% surcharge to Verizon Television, and that's television only, not internet or telephone, customers who help fund North Shore TV. Um, I expressed my concern last month about that additional 1% surcharge, um, and I don't know if any of the trustees have any other questions or comments. Anybody from the public have any questions or comments?
Uh, Marina, I want to do recollection on what would the average, um, impact to a rising?
We figured it was like.
Five bucks?
I don't even know that.
If you, if you're.
It was de minimis.
If your cable bill is 100 a month, just the ca, the TV, just the TV portion, which seems about right if you have a couple of premium channels or whatever, that would be a, a dollar a month, so it'd be $12 a year. Now, if you just have basic TV and it's $50 a month?
50 cents.
Then that's gonna be, yes, so it's a lot less.
It's de minimis.
Yeah, it's de minimis, but it's just another tax, and I just wanted to point to that.
But it is de minimis.
Yeah, 1%?
I mean, yeah, that's actually.
Oh, sorry, I was just making a point, even a large, very large bill.
It's not that much.
So can we review again what, like, we can either say, okay, or we can say, we don't like this, and then what happens when they, we say, we don't like this?
Either we have to go back and renegotiate individually with Verizon, or if we don't, then Verizon would no longer provide service to our residents.
Right. Individually meaning?
So right now, we negotiate as a consortium, the Great Neck Television Group, I forgot exactly what we call ourselves.
Intermunicipal.
Yes.
I didn't hear you.
Intermunicipal.
So, we all, we all.
Yes.
We all negotiate, we negotiate, we, we negotiate these traditionally as a group. It's, it's more efficient and more effective.
And I take it these other communities are willing to do this?
Um, as far as I know, nobody else has not adopted this, but I can't, since I'm under, um, oath here, I cannot answer that, 'cause I don't know every answer.
I'm, I'm gonna put you on the road.
I don't have every answer. Yes. Well, I was still, with AJ next to me, I feel like I'm being interrogated by the attorney. Intermunicipal.
Intermunicipal, yeah. All right, so what we do?
All right, so if there's any questions from the public, which sounds like no, Jeff, does this need SECR?
Uh, it would need SECR because it's an action being taken by the org, so the first few questions, wondering if there's a motion to approve the agreement.
Do I have a motion to approve this agreement?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Seconded by? Okay, um, I'll do the SECR, thank you. For the purposes of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SECR, I move that the village be identified as lead agency, and that this action be deemed a type 2 action under SECR, having no significant impact on the environment, and that as such, no further action is required under SECR.
Is there a second to that?
Oh, oh, 'cause I read it, you're right, Frank will say.
I'll second it.
The mayor vote, won't you?
Sorry?
Where do we, what, what is the, the initial motion to adopt their plan?
To approve.
To accept the agreement and approve it.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure I understood what the.
It would be authorized if the mayor signed on it after.
In other words, it'll take 12 bucks out of my pocket, 'cause I am a Verizon user.
There you go. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? That would be me, I will abstain in this vote. Passes. Last, which we will not be voting on tonight, is Local Law E, prior written notice, because it hasn't aged enough. Prior written notice of defect laws protect municipalities.
Go again?
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. Prior written.
I'm running out of time, and you jumped in, I'm sorry.
I didn't look up, I'll start. Prior written notice, prior written notice of defect laws protect municipalities from liability by requiring that local governments receive prior written notice of a defect or unsafe condition before the municipality may be found liable for a claim arising from the defect or condition. Based upon recent case law, it was recommended that municipalities, like the village, clarify the manner in which such written notice could be delivered. So the reason for this is to protect the village from potential lawsuits. We're going to specify how we want to receive notices of defects, so that we receive them properly, and that they're taken care of properly, and that they're not communicated to us in alternative channels of communication where we might not be able to read them in a timely manner.
And this was grabbed, uh, also in conjunction with the recommendations in that Council General Counsel regarding the language, and the thought process was that the village would require written hard copy of notice being delivered to the village clerk, um, and then other forms of notice would not be accepted, only as, um, written, uh, notice for the purpose of this local law. So that would be something posted to the village website, uh, or any other application process that's used in the village to allow the public to submit reports of service requests. This goes back to where trustees would sit on the license. Me, you know, if something goes to the building inspector, who's not charged for keeping track of this sort of thing, and yes, he might as well go to the official, but that's not somebody who would normally deal with this issue, uh, so it might not really focus where it should be. So that, that's the proposal.
Two comments, if I may, Mayor.
Please, on top of what comment you had last month.
Every village that I'm aware of has such a provision, the, the, this village could literally propose a code that we can't be sued at all, um, because we have sovereign immunity. This has always been considered a compromise between not allowing any kind of lawsuits which would disenfr, disengage us from doing repairs when they should be done, and allowing just any old lawsuits which creates concerns about being frivolous and costing the village a lot of money. I think it's, well, comment two is, I like the draft in the sense that it tells us all the ways that we can't be served with notice, but my position is that the, the words, notice of a defect in the form of a written physical hard copy, I would like to be more specific. Um, I would like that to say something along the lines of, in the form of a written physical hard copy, uh, delivered in person to the village, or by certified mail return receipt requested, because one of the big problems we have, as was pointed out at the last meeting, is that, um, vagueness creates a situation where the court is going to find in favor of the potential claimant instead of, uh, what we're intending to do here. What we're intending to do here is to make sure that we have written notice, it should be, somebody can bring a piece of paper to the village hall and hand it to the village hall, or it has to be done with some, either certified mail or by overnight mail, so that it guarantees delivery, so that there's verified proof that something's been delivered and something, somebody doesn't say, I sent the letter two weeks ago, and I don't care if you claim you didn't get it or not, because then we're gonna be involved in litigation about whether we got something or not. So, again, my suggestion is proof on both sides. Hand delivery, certified mail, or by overnight delivery, or by a delivery service that has a tracking ability, or something along those lines.
That sounds very reasonable. That's why I moved you closer to me this, because I knew you'd have a lot of questions on this.
Yeah, no, the rest of it is pretty similar to what other municipalities.
These are reasonable, what he's requesting? Okay.
Well, let me, let me play devil's advocate, as I like to.
That's why you're sitting over there in there.
Hand delivery is not necessarily, should it, should it be accompanied with a receipt? Or is it normally accompanied with a receipt? I mean, if I'm gonna be really, you know, going by the strict language you wanna go by, I think hand delivery leaves itself open for interpretation, too.
Well, my feeling is that if somebody delivers like this to the office, and the office will have to, if they don't have a policy, change their policy, it should be stamped received at a certain date and time.
We, we.
That would be our responsibility to adopt to the, to the measure. But the, the reason I, I particularly, I point that out is because you have a snow and ice thing in here, I mean, who's gonna, by the time the village gets a letter about the snow and ice, it, you know, so my, my feeling is, like, the city, I know what the city does, they have, they literally have like a mail, they have a, you go to an office and you, you stick the thing in there and it punches it, and most, if it's my office doing it, we send you with two copies, and you punch both of them, and you drop the one on the city's desk, and you bring the one home from yourself. That's what I would do if I was gonna, were gonna adopt this law and I was gonna drop it off here, but, you know, just be aware, Marla, you would have to have something that the day it comes in, you should properly date stamp it and timestamp it so that we know when we got it.
We do stamp a lot of the things we do, stamp.
Yeah, I figured you would.
We stamp most correspondence that comes in.
Yeah, so I didn't think it was changing, that's, to, to address your concerns, I thought that that's what we did, so that's why, I think it makes sense.
Okay, it's good, uh, good feedback from both of you, the devil and the advocate, so.
I, I've been known to advocate for devil's sake.
There you go. Any other questions on the side? Any questions from the residents? No, um, I'm gonna make a motion to hold public hearing, Local Law E, prior written notice at the next Board of Trustees meeting, which will be 7/7 at 7:00 PM.
Ooh.
That's lucky, hey? Seconded by?
I'll second, lucky seven.
Oh, Mr. Smith, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, I'm gonna make a motion to close the public hearing portion of the meeting at 7:30, 7:30? That clock's wrong, this one's right. Seconded by?
I'll second it.
Mr. Janice, Deputy Mayor Janice, all in favor?
I'm gonna get a shirt that says, I second that.
Okay, it's easier, I'm.
That's what I do.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you as always, Marina, good to see you.
I just wanna say, the only reason I asked you to repeat SECR?
Yeah.
Is because I make separate bullets for the transcript, so it will look here.
Okay.
That's.
I'm just trying to get you out of here faster.
Or get any extra lines or anything, it's just separate.
Okay, I'm gonna do public comments. David, you told me to point at you, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, ladies. This evening, I came to visit with you to ask that you consider what I mentioned in a memo to the village in March, which is a risk-return study on the whole issue of security and the patrol that we had. I find myself on this issue totally shooting from my hip, and I actually think, and I've read every one of the mayor's newsletters and anecdotal comments about things that go on, and I don't think there's a definitive yes or no. go on, and I don't think there's a definitive yes and no, and I'm not sure you'll actually find that there is one, but I think it's proven that as a fiduciary board and we always exercise that fiduciary responsibility, that before we commit on a long-term basis for $200,000 a year, that we explore this issue to its fullest. And I can't do it, I'm not sure that the board itself can do it, and I suggested in March the consideration, which is why I've come tonight, of somebody appropriately studying this issue. I raised the issue that it might be done by a criminologist because they're at greater expertise, and I would like and request that the board consider that. And the only thing I can add, because I want to be short in consideration, Randall always wanted me to be...
Three minutes, David, three minutes.
To say, two things have occurred and they're anecdotal and they really don't matter in this long-term sense, but a neighbor came up to me at 3:30 this afternoon and asked me about readers, and I said, well, I really don't know that much about them, but I know they happen in Saddle Rock and Great Neck, and he mentioned another community in Roswell that actually has, talking about license plate readers, and he said, can we get them? I said, come to the meeting tonight, it's a good time to bring that up. Well, I'm busy, I've got my kids and this and that. I think a lot of people are busy and I don't know how much attention they can give an issue like this. So, I said, look, I'm going to the meeting, I'm just going to ask that they review this issue to a greater extent, and I will ad freshly give you another instance, and this is not to say in favor or not, but it was a sixth precinct response, a good friend, a neighbor of mine, had a ring off at 3 o'clock in the morning when he was took some kerosene with his wife a few weeks back, and I don't know if our security people even know about it or recalled, but it turns out he had gone outside and left the door charred, and it would be too long winded, and the wind blew it open and set the alarm off. Nassau County 3rd Precinct came, they inspected the house and then they left and closed the door and did what they had to do. So I have the 6th Precinct doing what it's supposed to. And I just want to leave you all with the idea that I think this needs to be explored and decided upon, and I'm really diverging on this stuff that's here, but we had that unfortunate incident happen and it brings me to the fact that when I come down to the Boulevard, there's a sign up that says, "No trucks allowed," and I'm speaking about Middlenet Road, and then I believe I see a great many trucks back and forth on Middlenet Road. So we need money possibly to take care of improving the security, and I thought the money from the budget you could use to replenish your reserve fund or your circle spot over the next period of time, but you may find yourself needing to spend some money to improve the safety of the community as well, and this may work hand-in-hand with a decision on this issue. I've said my piece.
All right, thank you, David. I'll see you at Costco. I ran it to David at Costco, because I tend to.
It was good meeting.
Thank you. It was, we did have a very nice long conversation. Ms. Dilworth and Ms. Stillworth, you want to speak? One of you said you wanted to talk. I couldn't remember if it was you or your daughter. I spoke to one of you a month ago and someone said they wanted to speak, no?
No, I think that the incident has passed for a while.
Okay, well, we're welcome. See both of you.
My neighbors dumping their leaves across the fence so that you would get them instead of him, and nobody's there to even acknowledge it.
All righty.
You know about it.
I, I, we chatted on the phone, I know well about it.
Once the police came, we went inside.
Okay, well, that's probably the most appropriate response for something when that happens. All righty, I'm gonna go to the approval of our minutes. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or changes to the minutes from the May 5, 2025 Board of Trustees meeting? That being said, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the meeting minutes. Seconded by? Don't fight all over it. Seconded by, thank you, Trustee Smith. You're gonna sit here, you got a second.
I'm good.
All righty, all in favor? Aye. Excellent. Next, motion to approve claims. And somehow, in my packet, I don't have the claims, Marla.
Yeah, there's no, there's no claims.
So I can't tell you the dollar amount of the claims because they're not in the packet.
But I have it right here. I have it right here.
Well, I mean, you should have gotten that next time.
Yes.
I usually do that when I told you.
Yes, but usually I read the number. Thank you. All right, so I'm going to make a motion to approve $221,624.21 of claims for the, through the end of May, and I believe this is our final set of claims for the financial year, or will we have a little bit more next month?
We won't have more, but we will make adjustments in our books.
Okay, so then we can close the books on the year because our financial year just ended on the 31st and all our claims are in. So I'm making a motion to pass it in that dollar amount. Seconded by?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye, with trustee Frank. There are landscaping's in there.
It isn't there, right?
Yes, you will abstain from art of landscaping as you traditionally have done. Next is, we are going to have our first formal conversation on covered porches and how this applies to our principal dwelling, and Peter, if I botch it, you will save me, okay? So pay attention. I don't want to botch this one. We did, but I'm gonna read this just in case, so you're listening. So village code currently allows 10% of the total floor area of a home to be used for an outdoor porch without subtracting that from total floor area. That's a thank you, Gary, because that was one of your great ideas five, six years ago. Yeah.
More than that.
Yeah. So the code was adopted to help promote porches, which encourages neighborly communication. Our code needs to be updated so that this bonus is only applied to the principal dwelling and not any accessory structures, which was not the intention of the code when it was adopted. What was happening is some people are taking that 10% and applying it to a poolhouse or other structure, which really wasn't the intent on this. So we're just tightening up the code. And I want to know if anyone have any other questions, otherwise I'm going to make a motion that...
Let me ask this question, please.
Yes, sir.
If somebody does do a covered porch in a poolhouse, does that then count against their occupied space?
It counts the floor area.
Floor area?
Yeah.
Okay, then my question is, why is this offensive to us?
Well, by using the extreme example, let's say you have a 5,000 square foot house, okay? And that house has no porches on it. Then they would, they could put 500 square feet of covered porch in their rear yard, and I don't think that's what the intent was for the covered, covered porches. We were looking at when it was changed to be an architectural feature on the house and it's front of your porches and was meant to be for rear yard structure. So I use the extreme example, that's, that would be a very large covered area in the rear yard.
This, this actually opens up an interesting point I hadn't thought of. So is, is it that if you have a rear porch, that gives you your credit?
Yeah.
So it's not only a front, it's not limited to front yards?
Not side, not side porches, front or rear.
So you can't have a wraparound?
Right, we just, yeah. In other words, you get, you get that freebie for only 10% of its front or rear.
And before this code, if you remember, porches counted towards...
Yeah. Well, I think there were two, there were two intents on, on doing this. One is not to penalize people from wanting to put up a portico on their house, and two is, yeah, to encourage porches, in particular, front yard facing porches. So I'm just wondering, I, I, I know the extreme case is a good case that you're making and that's the reason why we should be doing, adopting this change, but I'm just wondering, should, should we be thinking about our rear porches that beneficial, that we would give someone a bonus?
I, I don't think it's been an issue yet to address. We can, we can address that separately, but I don't want to hold this up.
I guess I ask the question, do you see that as a, I don't think it increases, you know, the houses that much to allow the 10% for both the front and rear.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not looking at the detrimental parts, I'm looking, how do you encourage the positive aspects of it?
Right, right.
Right?
Does an outdoor kitchen fall under, like if somebody had a porch and they did a whole big covered outdoor kitchen, that falls under this?
If it's, yeah, so if it's under, under a roof, that would, that's part of, part of that bonus space.
The only way to do that would be a rear porch, you would get like a half a percent or, or a 5% and a front porch, you get 10%. So you would encourage people to do front porches, but why can't you do a, why can't you do a side, why can't you wrap your front porch, like if you wanted to do a house that looks like a Victoria?
Change it again. You can change it again, it hasn't come up.
Because that could encourage...
It's true that people would do a, a wraparound unless they had like a corner.
It hasn't come up.
It hasn't come up in however many years, I'll say more than five, that we...
You have to go for a variance on it, if it came up.
Right. All right, we'll, we'll discuss this, we'll have our public hearing at the 7/7 meeting at 7 o'clock.
Let me just ask you another question, then.
All seven of us?
You're talking about what your, your worst-case scenario is a 10% essentially standalone structure, not attached to anything, is that the idea?
No, it could be, it could be a covered porch attached to a cabana.
Okay. But if the cabana is only 100 square feet, your covered porch can only be 10 square feet?
Well, no, I think...
Because you can't count it.
Because our code says that our, our floor area is principal dwelling plus accessory structures, and the 10%, if it's applied, it could be applied to any of those, so you put all of it into, into the accessory, the way it's written, it's not clear that it could not be used as part of the, uh, uh, covered porch.
So that's weird because it should be 10% of the accessory structure or 10% of the...
It's not written that way.
Because then if you have a 5,000 square foot house...
Right, it should be pro-rated.
You could put a, you could put a porch bigger than the accessory structure on the accessory structure.
Well, yeah, I mean, 10% on, on say a cabana, let's say it's a 10 square foot cabana, 10% of that is 20 square feet.
Right, but if you allow them to use the 5, the 10% of 5,000...
We can rewrite that.
Now you have 500 square feet.
Well, that's, I think, like Peter suggested this, because there could be some instances and maybe it has already happened.
It should be one or all, depending on the, on the structure itself.
See, that's, that's the point of my question, though, was that, I mean, my many poolhouses have gone to waste, but if I had a poolhouse, if we already agreed to allow somebody to have a poolhouse, if you stuck a proportionally sized porch onto that thing, is that really offensive to us, is my question? Is that intend, is this intended to not allow that at all or to make you pay tax on that because it's a, a, a part of your use, you know, your land, whatever you call it?
It's nothing to do with taxes.
Okay, but occupied space, with that, attaching a covered porch to my house would not be, be occupied space, but attaching, having a 100, I don't know, poolhouse and attaching a little, like, covered porch onto that poolhouse, that would, I would have to count that as occupied space.
As floor.
As floor.
As floor.
Floor. I don't want to, just my question is honest, Sarah, I don't know.
Before that...
I don't know if it really bothers me that much, I think if you have a poolhouse, a porch is not...
What we did that, all that was counted as floor.
Right.
Right, right. So the only other, other way to think about it is that it would be proportional?
Yeah, but, again, 10%, of a...
No.
You know, it's...
AJ, we can give it...
10 square feet.
No, but, but would it allow you to have, is it would allow you, rather than having, if you had a, if you had a 300 square foot...
Cabana.
Cabana, and with a porch, then it would allow you 30, and say 100, 80 square feet was, was earmarked as, as porch, would allow you to have another 30 square feet to add to that 80.
Well, yeah, I mean...
That, I mean, that's the game people play on houses, it's the same game people play on the house side.
So, so if you had a 300 square foot, 30 square feet of it would be for free, if you had 100 square feet, you'd only count 70 of it towards the floor area, if you use that 10% number applied to that. See, whatever you're over, whatever you're over the 10% on a house too, if you're over, if you're over that 10%, then that counts as floor.
Right.
So if you had a 5,000 square foot house, you'd have 70 square feet.
Right, right, I forgot about that. So that doesn't, but, but, but you would make that decision as a homeowner of saying, okay, but I want some open space rather than closed space, and I'm gonna have to pay for it as FAR.
And, and, and remember also that all those covered porches go towards footprint of the house. Lot coverage.
Yep.
Lot coverage, so that's another limitation on, on what you can physically put on your property.
Well, I guess the point, the question, I think, that AJ wrote, is that we're not precluding people from putting porches on, on their...
No.
Their accessory structures, it's just they have to pay the price for it, not FAR.
Right, which is, most other, most other villages do that, we just added the bonus, we were unique.
Yeah, I think that's okay, AJ, I think that's okay. It's not, it's not saying you can't have a porch, just saying you, you don't get it for, you don't get part of it for free.
It becomes part of your floor.
Right.
But, but again, until we made that change...
Right, that's the way everything works, yeah.
It was always handled.
No, I think, I think, I think, I think you're right, and that keeps the, really the, the broad intent of the, the initial change in mind.
Now, if I put a retractable awning on my poolhouse, is that a covered patio or is that not a covered patio?
If it's an awning, no, it's not.
Okay.
But only on a poolhouse, not a cabana?
Well, I, I, I have to differentiate between my cabana and my poolhouse right now.
Yes.
You have to have one.
Which I have mine.
You have to have one.
Want to believe you? Yeah, 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 okay.
All right.
Understood.
Thank you, Peter, for staying for this, because we have questions.
I had no idea this discussion was gonna go on this far.
I, knowing this board, yes. All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to hold a public hearing on 7/7 at 7:00 PM with the seven of us. Thank you, AJ, for editing that. Do I have a second on that?
Mary Jo, second?
Thank you.
I was thinking of it.
All in favor? Aye. All right. You have in your possession a consultant agreement with the Lero Group for our MS4 stormwater report. Lero is significantly less expensive than our previous MS4 consultants, and I would like to sign this agreement. And do I need the board to approve this?
Was this the money given to us by the state or...
Sorry?
The money given to us?
No, that's, no, that's, that is for a sewer study. This is our annual required stormwater report, and in the good old days here, trustee Clancy used to do this for us, but trustee Clancy no longer does them for us, so we have to...
What, he used to do the MS4s?
Yes.
Really?
Yes, Bill used to do them.
Wow.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Randall, this sentence stated as of March, so that's where, that's three months ago, so is this, does that need to be changed?
You can address it to MS4.
If one is a, if we didn't approve this yet, this says, I think it's March, is that just a typo?
It's probably a typo.
No, it's not a typo, I got it then, but I didn't realize it needed a whole board to do it.
So it will be changed?
Yeah. All right, I'm gonna make a motion to approve this consultant agreement with the changed date to June of 2025.
I'll second that.
Excellent, all in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. Next on the list, I would say the building department report, but we don't need one, Peter, because we had no ARC. And by the way, you're, you're now excused if you want to leave. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. And then I would say Jeff, I would love to have a zoning report, but we didn't have zoning this month either.
We didn't have.
This is the rare month we didn't have zoning or ARC, just happened to work out that way. It's crazy. So now I will ask the superintendent of our highway department of public works, Mr. Falconis, to address the board. Did everyone get his report? Does anyone have any questions?
Pretty basic, right now we're giving to some groups either anything to a maintenance park, traffic, noise on Middlenet Road. Pretty basic, right now we're giving some routine where everything's all maintenance, hard, traffic, noise on middleneck road. That's just a lot of cleanup and stuff like that, you know, it's a, it's a weeding thing, grass goes like crazy right now because. It's a big time for it to grow, so we're constantly cutting it every day.
And I saw the new summer health weeding away today.
We got the summer health working. We planted the stuff in front of the village hall. Yeah, that's really it.
Looks good.
Just all just maintenance and things like that. We got the water off the decks. It took a while, the park, the seventh time, the first park, that was wrong, had to send it back and we planted the regular ones, so. That's all that's still, they go, the run is on Sunday, right? At least on that way towards that, towards like that, it'll go into the park though, doesn't it?
No, it starts on, it starts on Stone Town.
Oh, you just go.
Yeah.
By the way, next Sunday is science stock at the.
London Eye.
At the Long Island Children's Museum.
Science Museum?
It's.
It's in the newsletter, but that would be under your trustee report.
I just made.
Which questioned the.
I'll wait till. Definitely mayor report.
On the corner of. Port and Barn and.
Right.
Funny heights by the chain link fence, there's about three dead trees. Will they be replaced?
The arboretis, Kevin, Martin's Corner, yes.
We're trying to get them back. We just got a drip system now in that area, so we have to see hopefully. They can come back and now we're going to replace them.
It's hard to kill arboretis.
No, first year, no, first year, it's easy.
Oh, first year, yeah, yeah.
It's first year, we just.
They're pretty brown.
After two or three years, you can't kill those things.
We planted the.
Mine are like 70 feet tall. That and weeping willow trees. Don't have a lot of weeping willow trees.
That will.
No. Okay, thank you, Rich. All right, I'm going to do mayor's report. I have so much exciting stuff to talk about. Let's see. Pay your taxes, they are now due, and the portal opens so you can pay them online. Suzanne got a huge stack of checks, big old stack of checks, which is good because we'll be investing that very shortly. Our annual commercial gas powered leaf blower restriction ban begins in June 15th. So I have a question for the board. I have had multiple people ask me to lengthen this and start sooner.
Let them, I'm sorry, what?
I've had multiple people ask me to lengthen the amount of time that people cannot, the commercial landscapers cannot use the gas blowers. It was suggested to go beginning of May, and I thought maybe perhaps we consider May 15th. But I've gotten a few emails, I've gotten a few calls, Marla's gotten a couple of people. It's, it seems to be, I'm surprised Frank did this, because getting, adding more time to the commercial leaf blower restrictions.
Was it current length?
It's June 15th through September 15th.
Memorial Day, the weekend of.
It could be Memorial Day, that's fine.
I mean, I think everybody's done with their spring cleanups.
I think everybody's done by May 1st, but yeah, we want to give them a little extra time, but it's something to think about. We have some time to consider this and, I mean, I have some people who want to ban them all year round. One of, one of my favorite residents asked to ban it all year round, and I said that wouldn't be reasonable. But, so I'm getting feedback on.
Ban them on Saturdays?
Well, we do. We don't allow commercial, commercial landscaping on Saturdays, Frank.
Okay.
What?
You have, you have, you never hear on on Saturdays?
I, we, our code enforcers are out writing tickets. I mean, I.
I hear them in the business.
I don't know what you think we can do. Do you think we should physically go and take their gas blowers away from them?
After, after you do a smackdown, yeah, then you take them.
I don't think we can. I think there's some particular process in this country, so we can't do that.
No, but I hear them on Saturdays.
Our code enforcers out there writing tickets as he finds them. I mean, I can't stop people from committing crimes unless I have people on every corner stopping them.
And individual residents are allowed to.
Oh, no, he's, he's talking about, he's talking about the landscapers that.
My blower is just like a hit, like a blow to your head, right? Doesn't make damage notice. Now these are one, you know.
Jerry.
I know, I was just like, I was curious to see how it's been enforced, like what the record is.
We, Jerry writes and Jack write quite a good amount of.
And is it repeat offenders or is it?
It.
In theory, everyone is registered with the village that's offending, you know, doing.
That, that's not always true. There are plenty of landscapers.
I said, I said in theory.
There are plenty of landscapers who do not have a permit and then they're, they hopefully go get a permit after they have it accounted with our code team. But yes, there are some that are, I didn't look at, I haven't looked in a, since last year. We did have, we do have some repeat offenders.
And, okay.
They know better. They just, it's a cat and mouse game. They think they can be a better mouse.
I guess, but my main question is, are we changing behavior or not with this law?
We're definitely changing behavior. It's not like everybody. You have the occasional scofflaw that wants to try to get by. How much?
That should be, that should, that should.
And how are we doing, and how are we doing? Yeah, how are we doing on the weekend garbage stuff? Garbage left out all weekend. Are we catching people doing it? Because it's all.
Yeah, I don't really hear that much about it very.
It's not, it's not getting enforced. It's getting worse and worse for us. All right, we'll just have garbage out all weekend, that's all.
I only mention it every month, but it's okay. Okay. All right, maybe we'll have a public hearing on the leaf blower extension in the next couple of months. Annual road paving, we're still on schedule. Oh, we're on schedule. I think in August, it looks like was when we're going to repave the roads, correct? Okay, that's good. Who else is on my lovely list? Katy Apple Run this Sunday, 9:00 PM, 9:00 AM, 15, it's the 15th annual. I, I will not be running, but I will be there. And. Oh, the other thing, ha, I just found out over the weekend, the Nassau County Police Department wrote 62 tickets in the general vicinity of middleneck road going toward, from northern in the general vicinity down to Port Boulevard.
Nice rough view.
They, they are out in force.
I saw a bunch. Was that one woman stopped somewhere?
She was there like every 10 minutes. She was once on there.
Oh, Officer Vargas.
Is that her? She's a wonderful person, yes.
She was sitting on Cherrywood.
A lot of going.
That's her stop, the stop sign.
That blinking stop sign, yeah. She, she sat on Cherrywood and just every car. By the time she get leaves, and then she pulls them off around Paul Washington Boulevard, by the time she comes around again, she's like.
And then other associated offenses related to the stop sign. So, yeah, no, they're doing a good job. I, I spoke to police last week and asked for enhanced protection.
What's the latest on these stop sign cameras?
I've heard nothing from Senator Martins, but I will see Mayor Donald next week and I can ask him. My guess is because the, I think, the state legislature has ended their year, and I haven't heard anything, my guess is nothing happened again. Probably got stuck in committee, unfortunately. And I am done with my.
Has anyone spoken to Long Island about the progress of the bridge like it's not scheduled?
Actually, it's in the newsletter, but if you want me to talk to you about it, it's in the newsletter every year.
Yeah, don't try to take the train into the city. It's going to stop at Bayside. See that this weekend and the weekend of the 24th? Starting at like midnight or whatever until Monday morning, two, two weekends in June.
It's the 6th to the 9th, and then the 20th to the 23rd.
Right.
They'll be working 24 hours, smooth it out.
So you have to take.
It feels like living there, they are working 24 hours.
This one's really, they wore this.
Take the bus from Bayside.
This is not where they're sliding the bridge in yet. That's not, that's not this.
Is it supposed to be noisy though, or is it controlled?
Demolition?
Work.
Well, I mean, they're doing.
They're just blasting through the rock.
That would be serious, because like if they're doing stuff at 2:00 in the morning, what is it?
I don't know. The lead abatement, demolition of the old bridge structure and installation of new precast beams. So demolition might make noise, but that might be during the less, the overnight hours. Yep, installation of precast beams, that can be done at nighttime. That's not very noisy. And lead abatement, I don't know how noisy that is.
They all have cranes and a little bit of noise.
Yeah. It's necessary. It's got to get done. You guys know how dangerous that bridge was.
I'll be away this weekend.
That's a good move. All right, any trustees' reports?
Quick question.
Sure.
Marla, have we heard from the state P O T on the island by middleneck?
No, I reached out last week, began today, we're back, so.
So in the Newsday article about the, you know, young man and the guy killed, it mentions that they're changing the, the whole traffic situation at the intersection of the. So it's, it sounds like it's a done deal and ready to go by Newsday's article, but I don't think that's the case because we haven't heard anything.
Newsday's article also had some erroneous information about the scope of what the state was going to do with that research.
Yeah, yeah, right.
That was the original scope.
Right, right, right. That got killed a long time ago.
Yes, so Newsday's information is not, is not correct.
Fake news.
Yeah.
Wasn't that at the other end of the middleneck?
Yeah. It's Newsday. All right, we have a board meeting at 7-7 at 7:00 PM. I'm going to say that one more time, I love it. There's no other questions, comments, or?
May I just have one?
Sure.
Response to Mr. Frankel's comments, is that something that we talk about next month? Do we talk about it in executive session or how, how do we address?
I don't believe that's, that is, that is allowable in executive session. We can discuss it. We can discuss it now if you want, or we can discuss it next month.
So is it, so in other words, let's say we said, let's have a vote if we want to continue the security force, or not? Is that something that, and we've had numerous public hearings, he's brought up, his suggestion was the criminologist. So we, we didn't respond to his original suggestion, so he came again and brought it up. I'm thinking rather than just ignore him, do we, do we have a, is it something that we just let him comment? Or, you know, again, I think we've had at least three meetings with the public. Is it something that we said, okay, out of mess, we have, I really don't know. Do we say, let's have a vote tonight about to continue the security force or not? How does it work? So this isn't a local law where there has to be a scheduled. I can't hear you, what? This isn't a local law where there has to be a scheduled public hearing, the board can take action anytime they want. Whether or not it's on the agenda, a board member can add something to the agenda. As I've said before, my recommendation would be that there be votes for the public only because that's what happened when the board discussed it last time. But that's not required. The question is, is that required or not? A board member can make a motion on this issue anytime.
But we did vote as a board on the budget, and the budget had these dollars.
But we also said, if we just said that, in other words, are we locking ourselves into a contract with a company for a year? And my recollection was we have to get them notice, two or three months, but that, that did not. And then I think the question was, what happens with that extra, you know, let's call it $150,000? Can it be used for other purposes? I think the answer was no. It would then be, in other words, instead of raising taxes hypothetically next year, perhaps we lower tax or keep tax the same. Let's say we said, okay, let's vote and, and we said, now we have this money, then is there, are there guidelines with what it can be used for? Does it sit, does it go down to pay off our reserve or can it be used next year when we figure out our budget and say, you know what? We don't need this money anymore, so therefore, let's apply it and give it back to the residents. So I'm just questioning how that, how that works. So I just want to go through both things. So first, if the board was to pass a motion saying we're going to end the contract, then yes, you would want to do that, you know, subject to giving them the appropriate notice on the contract. And then your question is, well, we have this money dedicated to, under the current budget, but that's money that hasn't been expended yet. Right. So, I mean, I would talk to the president, but I believe that's money we could then be used for another bill of purpose. It's just not going to that purpose. It's just like a budget, a budget, a budget, and you look at the end, when you have to balance a budget, sometimes you need to take from something and give to something else or what have you. Like your, somebody's point about the, about the, not the camp, the license plate readers or talk about something else. So if, if there was a need for something else, then that could be applied to that in theory? I, I think so. I would check it for you to see if you have a budgetary adjustment or realignment, but it's money that the village would then have.
Correct, to spend or not spend.
Correct.
Like any other budget line.
Correct.
If we didn't want to spend any money on the highway department, we could stop having a highway department.
But I, I would see a problem where if we get rid of security, we don't lower the taxes, people are going to come in and say, you got rid of security and I'm still paying the taxes.
Well, you can't, so you can't do anything this year.
Right. No, I know that, but I'm just one, you know, wondering what the backlash would be if we don't lower it. If we say, well, we raised them, what was the raise, 13%?
13%.
We raised them 13% for security, now we got rid of security, so we're lowering it 13%. People say, oh, yeah, that makes sense. But we raised them 13 for security.
That was two years.
Then we got rid of security, but you're still paying 13% more.
That was two years ago.
But I would imagine, I wasn't here, that you raised 13% because of your overall budget and not having. Because.
Right.
Truthfully, you don't have that problem anymore. So.
What problem?
You're not going to have to raise your taxes.
We don't know what healthcare costs, I mean, some of that is actually.
You're not going to have to raise your taxes. I can pretty much assure you, you're not going to have to raise your taxes 3%, 2%, 13%, I'm sorry. Do what you have to do at 2%, but most villages do because costs do rise and whatnot, and you have needs in the village beyond. You have low work that you're onto, the beautification and salaries, et cetera, et cetera, that happen. And so to just wait until you need it, that's why people, that's why even when you don't have to necessarily stay under the cap, you don't want to kill your residents in raising fees even more. That's why we do, because it is sort of the minute, it's the under 2% thing.
But doesn't the security represent about 8% of our budget?
About, maybe, but.
So I forgot.
It's, it's about $10, I don't know.
You can't look at that. I think you got to look at what was our, what are the numbers and what percentage is that? No, no, I know, but I'm saying in terms of doing the actual numbers, what's the overall budget? X, I think you took fire out because we separated it out, is my recollection.
We always take fire out.
Taking fire out, what percentage of our budget or take the code enforcer out, what percentage is the security car of our overall budget?
I, I don't have the budget for it. I can't answer that question.
We can certainly provide that, you know, fairly easily. But I'm, all I'm saying is that you don't have to worry about that after you can. And in fact, you know, I believe that we are walking towards replenishing that reserve fund, which we still have reserve funds.
We have the, we have the proper levels of reserve funds.
Yeah.
Per the guidelines of the state controllers office. We don't have, we're not below and we're not excessive. We are at the proper levels of reserve. There is no need to replenish our reserves. Our reserves are healthy.
That's not to say that my group be used differently, that's a different story, but I'm just, you're worried about another tax increase because of the budget, because of that, it's just not going to happen.
But if we have excessive expenses for the next year budget, the 2026, 2027 budget, we can address it at that point. And as you said, if health insurance costs double and our liability insurance costs triple, we can look at the budget and address line items that need to be reduced or moved. And that's for any and all items in our budget. Parks, security, snow removal, and any of the basic ones, office supplies, personnel.
I think his point of, you know, and I brought this up, you know, we, as village of Flower Hill, probably, what was it? Over $6 million are going to Nassau, the Nassau between their, you know, the two funds in terms of the Nassau County Police Department, right? So the question is, and that's been brought up, is this, you know, 180 or 200, I don't know what the numbers, I don't have them in front of me, $200,000 a year, annual? thousand dollars a, a year, annual? He's saying, and he even said, I don't know if it's, you know, and it's anecdotal, I mean, your village, you know, mayor, when you point out things, and he's also pointing out something that they weren't involved in. So we're gonna go round and round, I'm just wondering, what is?
David's pointing out a door that popped open in the middle of the night and it set off in the lawn. The proper response is from the Nassau County Police Department, so that's good. It's a non-sec order to say it's connected to the security patrol. David's, David's comment has no, no relation to the security patrol. The security patrol is not hooked up to central lawn.
His comments were also that, you know, again, how, and we, we are, we're, we can keep arguing this and going around and around, where is the hard evidence saying that a, you know, fourteen thousand dollars a month security patrol is the reason that we have been relatively, you know, quiet for, in terms of incidences that, such as we had a year and a half ago?
Mm-hmm.
Right? But I think that's the, can we attribute that unequivocally to the security patrol? Or are we saying that, that the increased presence of the Nassau County Police, which we then, you addressed them, you reached out to them, they have committed to be more active.
That was a year and a half of that.
Right? Um, so can we say it's because the Nassau County Police Department that, you know, and, or the fact that, you know, Nassau County is rated the top safest county in the, in the country?
You know, Flower Hill was rated the highest, um, income in all Nassau County. That was this, last week, it just happened.
So, so my point is.
We can afford our.
Must've been outraged.
At the bottom line, if we say, let's have a vote tonight, can we do that?
You can't.
If, what I'm saying is, if a motion is made by a board member tonight, then it's seconded, can you vote it? This was not something that was done by, by law, is a required public hearing, the village chose to have a public hearing. What I've been saying, of course, my recommendation is to, to remove it or modify it in the same fashion, because that's presumably what the public would expect, but this was not a local law that has a required public hearing, and it's not the, um, the Verizon grid that has to have a public hearing, that's not the required to hear. Um, and it also was not on the agenda for tonight, so that would be something where, I'm just saying, there could be a question raised, but it's not, the board is not concluded from taking it.
I know, who would do that? It would be dishonest to the residents to hold a snap vote.
Yeah.
At a board meeting, at the end of a board meeting.
Right.
To dissolve, to dissolve anything that affects everybody.
But I just wanted to understand, then do we put it on for next month and say we're going to vote? We've had numerous, like how, what's the, I'm asking what the proper, so that we look like, you know, we're not trying to sneak something in, but we've talked about it, we've had public hearings.
We voted on this, we voted on the budget, this board unanimously voted on it.
But also with a caveat that it could be discontinued if we voted on it, right?
Like, but anything can, so I would suggest if there's anybody here who has any data that can show that the patrol is not effective, I recommend they get that data and present it to the board. Just saying that we're going to hire a criminologist, I, I'm not spending village money on a criminologist for this, the residents have spoken.
But you can't say that the, you can't, you don't have hard data saying that it's attributable.
And, and nobody else here has data that says it is or is not.
We never will.
It's an, it's anecdotal, it's anecdotal, we keep on seeing, we keep on seeing, on, I, I point out when the patrol finds things that are really abnormal. And some nights it's great, some nights everything's quiet and wonderful, and then every so often we find some events that are very questionable. And I believe that by having the car driving around at night, we have less and less questionable events, because the bad guys see that these either retired or current law enforcement officers who are very good at speaking to people. When I read these reports, they, they know how to address people who may or may should or shouldn't be in the village, and they're able to ascertain what people are doing, and those people who probably shouldn't be here leave quickly.
Does, does Nassau County assemble criminal activity logs by village that they cover?
Precinct, they do it by precinct?
By precinct. So.
You get the sixth precinct crime statistics.
So we get that report from them and it's very limited in the amount of data that they share with us.
I mean, I would.
It's only traffic.
One way of measuring.
Following too close, it's always stopping too close.
They will talk if there's other offenses, they won't give you the details.
Right, they say one.
You see if there's a larceny or whatever, but there is that data.
But one measure B is that we, we have a better rate than other comparable communities, that then, that would make, that would then look, make us look like we're doing well with the security.
I am meeting with the sixth next Wednesday.
Because there's no other way to measure.
I will, I will ask.
Unless you have, unless the village has their own police department, that's, you know.
No, I'm, I'm saying covered by Nassau County, and, and to be fair, it has to be a similar profile of community.
I'm sure if they have a database of all the arrests that are made in the sixth precinct, it could be sorted.
Geographically.
Geographically to show addresses in Flower Hill, that's, if you're AI, it'd take two milliseconds.
Yeah, well, I'm not just, but we'd be interested in, in outside of the village, and if those rates vary from our village to outside of the village, because then if they vary, then, and they're varied to our, you know, that were better, then you could argue, well, maybe the security patrol had, but if they're no different, then you have to begin to wonder.
Right, right. Yeah, that's a good point.
All right, so I'm meeting with the sixth next Wednesday. I was talking, want to talk to them about road safety and other issues. I can ask what data they have that they're able to share with us.
Can I just say? I just, I just want to get this down the.
Sure.
We had a pre-budget meeting.
Yes.
And then we had, which was open to the public, then we had a budget debate, and we passed the budget, what, last month?
Yes.
April.
Why? We put it in the budget to do this for a year. Is there some, if, if a voter comes in next month and says they don't want, they think these, the money spent to make the, the medians ugly, we should then take that up the next month and vote on that? I, I, if this discussion should have been held, if, if every month, if I'm scared if I miss a meeting, that it's going to change the vote because people are going to try to just pass this on a whim, this is kind of, this discussion should have happened when the budget. We decided as a board unanimously to approve everything in that budget and to reexamine a budget item, just because a voter comes in and complains about it, I, I, I find that a little disingenuous, that's just my personal opinion about it. I've heard concerns by board members about this patrol, we talked about it for almost a year, but the time to make these things happen or not happen was before we started charging everybody in the village taxes to pay for this thing. I mean, we don't, whatever, that's just my opinion.
We'll, we'll address this again.
It's fine.
At next year's budget.
Well, we can address, we can address it on a dime if we want, someone can make a motion right now, but.
But I don't think we're going to.
I think we still need to have a vote, because we have the right to bring up the idea that the board should be handled, because obviously this.
We already did it through the, we did it through the budget.
But that's just budgeting.
I'm not gonna do, this is like the threat, every month, it sounds like there's gonna be the threat of this vote.
Right.
We've talked, I think we've talked about this since we got the security for patrol, we all said, let's do it for a year, I think the initial conversation is, let's have it for a year, and then see how it goes.
They get through the holidays.
Let's get that for the holidays, and then we'll have a vote.
And then we'll have a.
Punting it to the next one, just have the vote and be done.
The, I'm not gonna do it. The vote, the vote happened with the budget, that was in essence the vote affirming.
No, my understanding, it didn't have, that we had the right at any point, we're a board, it's not, it's not the mayor running.
If I made a motion right now.
It's, it's a majority rules, isn't it?
Seconded, do we have the vote?
I mean, we, we don't.
That's how that works.
I just want to, there's a lot, I just, I want to respond to the question, just want to make sure, oh, here's the question.
Was if I made a motion right now to hold the vote at each July meeting, and somebody seconded it, we vote, can we have a vote?